Equity and State subdivision located on the east side of Salt Road, Equity and Forest Creek, Equity Court was requesting preliminary vinyl subdivision in site plan, 79 lot single family residential subdivision at 69.5 acres located in R S 3, single family residential district under the court of law.
Good evening, members of the board. Jared with Evans Fox on behalf of the applicant for three equity court. As a point of clarification, we're actually before the board tonight for a concept sketch review. Just as by way of background, we previously went before the town board for rezoning application back on March 18th, 2021, going from R2 to an R3. We were sent to this board back on April 6th of 2021 for review and recommendations. And then after going before this board, we were sent back to the town board. It was May 6th of 2021, at which time we did get our request for rezoning for this particular lot going from R2 to R3. So as I understand it, we're here tonight for sketch plan and concept review. I do know that there's been some materials that have already been submitted to this board, which have reviewed in conjunction with the rezoning. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Walt Baker, who is the engineer on this project.
Good evening, Walt Baker with DSP Engineers. As Jared mentioned, we're here to make our sketch plans. Everybody's probably familiar with it. It's 69.5 acres plus or minus, record is 230, Salt Road. And the layout that we have tonight is very similar to the one that we had at the sketch plan review. The major change that occurred with this site plan is that we had to move the entrance, which originally we had it lined up at this point, and we had to move it about 250 feet north due to Monroe County DOT's requirement of not having aligned intersections, which is contrary to what you find in the New York State DOT. But Monroe County DOT has this mindset that opposing left turn movements would be better off if the streets were offset. So we basically went into the town for a PRC review committee meeting prior to that change, and then we made that subsequent change before we submitted in early July after this meeting with that change. We also made a couple other comment changes from the PRC, which included a drainage swale location and new lot lines as far as how they backed up to Salt Road and the onsite detention facility. We do have, obviously, public sewers, we have public water, there's dedicated roads, infrastructure throughout the site compliant with all the town codes. We were imposing sidewalks, but sidewalks are going to be eliminated from the project. We still want streetlights, so we're imposing streetlights throughout the property. Obviously, streetlights at intersections in the property line are 250 feet from the streetlight and we alternate those on either side of the street, the street lighting. The other comment that we received from PRC was that we had two detention facilities, one along Salt Road, and we had a second one to the north along the property line because the drainage divide, basically four drainage divides on this property, and they'll head down towards Salt Road and then the one, basically three of them head that way towards Salt Road and one heads off towards the north to the adjacent property. So we had an onsite detention facility there. Comments we came back from, the highway department is, they didn't like the detention facility because again, I guess as Josh mentioned on previous application, they don't prefer to have detention facilities towards backyard. So we'll redesign that and move that and accommodate that along Salt Road. So we only have one onsite detention facility. Now that we have the alignment of the streets being moved, we have more area for that. So, okay, fall into place. Any comments other than that? Were a couple technical things about sewer laterals and manhole size and like you mentioned and Jared mentioned, it's in the R3 zoning and all the lots that we have on site are at least 22,000 and higher. We've got some lots that are actually over an acre and three quarter acre in size. A lot of the lots are in excess of the 22,000 spread. If you have any questions?
Walt, did you say that you're appearing before us for a sketch plan?
Tonight, correct, yes. We actually submitted our application on a cover letter. We were under the impression after we went in for sketch plan during the rezoning process that that rezoning meeting that we had with the sketch plan review and review and recommendation for the plan, we're back to the town board. After we submitted the application, we're informed that we should probably follow sketch plan review first and then come back with a comment.
Reason I'm asking is...
Yeah, the agenda you have in front of you was previous, that's not the one that the sound paper was.
Oh, it is in fact your first. Okay, that's what I was curious.
That was before I went into the paper that was originally proposed is that, published was for sketch.
Okay, thank you.
So basically it's sketch plan review. If you have any comments, then obviously incorporate those comments along with the PRC comments that we received and incorporate those into the set of plans and resubmit after we're fine. It's 79 lots overall and we're going to do first section's 23.
Again, this isn't a public hearing.
Why did we get a letter then?
We got a letter from them that it was a public hearing today.
Yeah.
Okay, you know what? It isn't a public hearing. It's published as that. I'm sorry, I mean, but what we'll do, we'll look. Is it okay if we open it anyways? Is that, you know, you can get up and speak. No different. That's the opportunity to speak.
It's fine by me.
Okay, okay, good. So if you want to say something, you're welcome. Give you like three minutes?
Yeah.
Any comments on it? Go ahead.
Marky Hollis, 237 Salt Road. I reside right across the street from where this will be. And I guess I have a couple questions and concerns. This is a proposed sketch plan. The latest thing I saw was a pretty good sized retention pond along a good stretch of Salt Road. My personal concern is most everybody here has an across the street neighbor, has a neighbor that when they look out their front door, they look across their neighbor's front doorstep. I'm not going to have that option. Where I'm at, I'm going to look at the back of these group of houses here. So what I'd like is the town to listen to me, request the required, then to put some sort of a berm up against what would be the east side of Salt Road. No matter what I do looking out my window, I'm always going to look at something across the street. I understand. Top of a house, roof line, that's one thing. Looking out my front door, across the street to my neighbors, I shouldn't do like I should have to look at swing sets, decks, sheds, hot tubs and such. The other concern I had was with the size of that retention pond, like a lot of retention ponds, what do you got planned to keep the water moving to get off? Because otherwise, if there's nothing to keep them moving, we all know they become pretty stagnant and then become a mosquito swamp. Another thing that just occurred to me is I've looked across the street from this field for eight years now. The varied crops have gotten planted across the time to get a whole different section of, across a section of wildlife that comes in and feeds. Geese is one of them. So I also see with this pond, unless there's some way to keep them from migrating out to the road, they're always going to be out to the road or worse yet, in my front yard. So I guess these are concerns that I have from my perspective. I know a lot of these people have their concerns about groups. Is a berm, now speaking of the berm, a good example would be on Phillips Road off the intersection of Phillips and Schlegel, the metal development. They've got a very, very nice, good sized berm. So people driving down Phillips Road see basically what I would hope to see, the top of the house and the roof of the house. You don't see the goings on in the backyard. The berm has been nicely seeded, nicely planted, nicely maintained, which is another concern that is, needs to be addressed. If you do do something in the form of a berm, so I haven't bothered the people from the people's backyard, I also need some assurance that it's going to be maintained. I don't want to all of a sudden have a berm across the street and hide the houses, but now I got just whatever imaginable weed or what have you growing in it and nothing being removed. I don't spend the time I spend on my property to keep it nicely looking across the street to see something like that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
We'll have to address it. Walt, you want to come back in there?
I'm the site engineer, but I'm taking under advisement with the owner. Obviously, we can look at those concerns and come up with some ideas on how we can address that and come back at preliminary with some answers.
We did talk about berming at one point earlier on too.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Right, the highway guy, he was, obviously, he needs access to the pond. So he likes the fact that the pond along Salt Road was easy access because the town would maintain the outpost structure. And he didn't want us to put up, you know, we were thinking of putting trees along Salt Road, then the pond, and he doesn't want to have, he's got to maintain the pond, so he didn't want to have anything competing his pathway along Salt Road. So we were talking about doing something on the other side of the pond. As far as, we didn't show on the plan like vegetations and trees, groupings of trees at the corners of the property line, so people would know where their property line is and obviously what we do, homeowners come in and they embellish the land and so they're going to be adding more to it. But we did have that on the plan.
What is the depth of those lots right there along, not the pond is, but the others, along Salt Road?
Along Salt Road?
Pretty deep, aren't they?
These lots here, yeah, they're actually, we did with the pond area, they're 430 feet.
Yeah, so the possibility maybe try and consider putting a berm there.
Twice the depth of the standard.
Which makes sense, you know?
Right, the standard R3 lot is like 220. These are like 430.
So if there's a berm in the back along that way?
Yeah, that's the building.
As far as maintenance, you pay a guarantee maintenance because you privately own the yards. You have to be individuals to take care of it.
Right, that's what we were thinking along the line of evergreen, maybe some deciduous trees so they have some color.
All right, something to consider then. Okay. All right. Anywhere else we should speak?
Around the ground. Has there been any thought of putting in natural vegetation or does the geese wanting to?
Well, generally, generally most...
Going around the walk-in room, some kind of natural pushing in shrubs or whatever.
Actually, when you design the stormwater facilities, federal government and also New York State, all the way down the line, wants us to provide certain slopes on the edge of the pond. So what you do is you end up getting cattails. And they like that because that keeps the geese away from, the geese will go through old structure. If you have it all nicely mowed all the way down, they can walk right in. And if it simply has cattails around, around the perimeter, it's too difficult for them, they go away. But I've got in my office in Greece, we've got a pond right next door to us and they go across the road. They don't even bother with it.
Is there some kind of a maintenance plans part of this to, so people know? It's really to their benefit, not to cut the grass up to the edge?
Well, that's what we were talking about with the PRC committee as far as putting a demarcation line because there'd be an easement around the pond area, which would be the town. So it's kind of like a homeowners association where you say, okay, let's delineate where people are going to go and what they're going to do. So we have, we talked about that, and that's why we're thinking about doing trees, groupings at the property corners, you know, trying to block, or give them a sense of here's your limit line. And the lots are accessible.
Okay. Anyway. I guess your next step would be to...
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Cheryl Ades. I live at 215 Salt Road, so across the street from the development. So I have four concerns right now. One is the new location of the driveway, the road out, will probably now come right in front of my property. And also, if this is 80 homes or 79 homes are home to me out here, if there's, you know, again, surveys say that if there's eight trips out and about of that, I'll get over 640 trips of headlights coming into my house or coming into, you know, that kind of my property, which I'm not sure, I don't know how I feel about that right now. I do want to also, another concern is again, following Mike, the berm issue. When we built the briarwood is next to my, the side of my property, briarwood has a nice berm going between my property and the road that goes into briarwood. However, an issue that has come up with the developers developing the property, but then when all the houses are developed, they wash their hands of maintaining those properties. And so now I have the trees, I have a neighbor who has to maintain a property because no one's maintaining it, as well as the retention ponds that are in the back. If I was a homeowner that was next to one of those retention ponds, because it is truly full of algae and mosquitoes and et cetera. So I don't, I don't know, but it's, again, it's not being maintained like the developers had promised in the initial development of briarwood. The paths are not being maintained as they would be these nice walking paths around the ponds, et cetera. So I would have concerns about those things as well because it's, yeah, that's going to be facing that right now as well as this displacement. And then the last comment that I do want to make is the drainage culvert that comes into my property truly floods my property that is to drain back into, I believe it's 4 Mile Creek or whatever that's back into the woods behind my property. So I get in any substantial rain of a lake, if you will, and my property line, through the middle of my, through the middle of my properties. So I would want to make sure that what's going to be done, again, concerning the stormwater ponds, that these become, you know, mosquito dusted and maintained, but also what's to stop them from continuing to drain and flood my property, which is across the street right here.
You're located, you're front lot on Salt Road?
I'm front lot, right, I'm the front lot next to, so I would be...
Just to the north.
Right here. So more of your, the oldest is the north exit, not the other way.
Okay, so you're right here.
Yes.
I see the entrance is here and we lined it up with the property line. Don't point into anybody's house.
Well, you own that too.
So these two, these are two more lots, those are both mine. And that's mine, and that's my sister's. You're painting on my daily compound. So I'm going to stop at that right now.
Look, actually, the way it was originally designed, I'm sure you'll remember, because it lined right up with the street across the path, over the last year. Then the county, yes, the county asked me to change it. Why, I had no idea.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, we're in the back.
So I just wanted to present it, thank you.
Thank you. Right, we should probably say somebody here. Right, we did have to relocate the entrance and we didn't line it up with anybody's driveway. We didn't line it up with anybody's house. We actually lined it up with the property line, just so we would not be having headlights pointing at somebody's house. And as far as that culvert she's talking about, it's a 12 inch culvert that's in this area here. And we're not even going to utilize it because it's too small for us to drain into it. So basically, we're diverting that drainage and we're going to send it over to the other culvert, which is the one they just repaired and repaved the road. So we're going to send the water over there. So it really wasn't anything we'd want to use because like I said, I can see where it floods, but they undersized, when they built the pipe, you know, they just put 12 inch pipe and it's not, it's not, it's not adequate for what's needed.
So you're diverting it back?
We'll send over. Right, we're going to, we're actually going to, as I mentioned before, we had a pond heading to the north because the drainage comes through and it heads to the north. And then there was a divide that comes down through and goes through that pipe you're talking about. And with the redesign that we're doing, in fact, our original design, we didn't even want to use that pipe because it's, like I mentioned, it's 12 inch pipe. So now we're going to eliminate this, we're just going to utilize it along Salt Road. So we'll have one storm, storm facility along Salt Road.
So there won't be a storm facility north of...
No, we're going to take that out. We're going to take this out, we won't use that pipe, that 12 inch pipe there, maybe just some backyard drainage. That drainage divide that I mentioned, the drainage swale that comes down through there, that'll be eliminated. So there'll be a little bit of drainage from the houses there, you know, the yard, but that's all good. Won't be anything substantial. We're going to be basically reducing that by tenfold. So, and the alignment, again, I didn't agree with it. I called Monroe County DOT and went over it quite substantially with the guy that's in charge now. And he's telling me it's been their policy for a number of years to offset that. And all the engineering that I've done and all the design manuals for traffic control showed streets lined up, but in their opinion, they want to keep them offset because when two people are pulling out, making a left turn, they're thinking somebody's going to have a conflict and they feel it creates more gaps on the road. And so this isn't marketplace, you know, it's not like this is a heavily traveled road where you're going to have problems, where people are, you know, opposing streets are going to have difficulty, everybody yields to the right like a normal intersection and that's it. But they wouldn't, it wouldn't bend.
I was a little concerned just about traffic because we are, there's golf course on our road and people coming up, they may go in and be extensive, a number of houses here.
Right, and as far as that park lane you're talking about, that was a cluster development on that project next to you? And I see what you're saying, because I think they had open space that was part of an association.
Yes.
And the association just kind of doesn't take care of it. So we don't have that, it's all private lots.
Well, yeah, that's a whole different scenario there. It's a PJOA. They should have an organization where they do their general maintenance and stuff.
Well, similar to what Rudy was talking about, if you have an association where they're collecting association fees every month, then they have a means to maintain those grounds where apparently that project never did or whatever happened with that design, I don't know.
All right. Anyone else?
My name is Dean Lucas and I am 290 South Road, which is basically just the entire south line of where this is going to be. And like Mike was saying, he doesn't really like looking out at somebody's backyard. I'm going to be looking at at least seven of them. I've encountered them, but I'm going to be literally looking like when my daughter, my granddaughter is swinging, I'm going to be looking in somebody's backyard. When I go out with my hot tub, I'm going to be looking in somebody's backyard. What I would like is if we could have some better buffers on it. We have had, we said that there's like a hedgerow there with, full of trees. The trees are really nothing more than brush, they're falling now. There's a few tall trees that were put in by, I think Bob, that goes in years ago, but at any rate, they're, they're tall trees, there's not a lot of blockage at all. I had the lawyer that was, you know, helping me look into how we'd possibly change from large lot to R2 in 2018, I think it was, 2018, without me ever knowing that that was happening, without any of the neighbors knowing that that's happening. And yet, it happens. The lawyer said we got four months and then we're going to fight for court, $30,000 to get back to large lot and then I'll get this to you again. So I opted to not go with that move, at least at this point. However, what I'm asking is maybe some sort of easement or like a, something where it's a restricted deed or something and have some real blockage. I believe the lawyer said he talked to you and you were saying maybe some...
Yeah, she spoke with me. So I spoke with Mr. Weister.
Yeah, and that's, and that would be good. I would like some way to know that the landlord, you know, the new house isn't going to be shot. Now, I would love to have a berm, like they were saying, wish I could have seen my initial offer to you and I realize that my side, my side is...
Are you, are you still using Mr. Weister?
Yes.
Okay, so I could reach out to him tomorrow.
That'd be great. I wouldn't mind if my head was on the, if you want, if you want.
Guys, the guy that directed you stuff over, you guys are having a conversation.
He said that he was going to get in touch with my lawyer and see, you know, if we can't find some neutral...
Now, let me ask you a question. You, I think I got you right. Your property line is to the north line of this town?
No, to the south, and the south, the entire line of this, at 290...
Were you in the south?
290, yeah, 290 South Road. The other Dean is the north side.
So, okay, I was a little piece of you there. Okay, so that's, that's heavily brushed in there now?
It's, it's garbage brush, yeah. It's just, not heavily, it's one, one edge road and so there's one tree every, I want to say maybe four feet, and the trees fall down like every month, there's cleanup that has to be done. And Bob used to do it, now I do it.
Yeah, this came up the last, last video.
Correct, yes. So I'm, I would like if there was some like easement or like restricted deed.
Well, what'd you get? What we've done in other areas in the past is subdivision goes back, back to back to another subdivision and we've left like 40 foot strip, you know, 20 foot and 20 foot where it's, you just don't touch it.
Yeah, no, I like that.
There's no beauty in it, but it's overgrown. And what happens in a few years, it's overgrown. And it makes a natural buffer between.
I like that idea.
So maybe the thing to do, Walt, is consider just leaving, leaving a 20, 20 foot of that backyard breathing.
If you do that, if you could do that, then run out of berm.
That was one of the...
It's a shame, it's a shame to put a berm and tear good trees out, you know?
There's no good trees.
There's no good trees now.
There's no good trees.
No, they're all like...
No, that's what you were saying, it's just brushed now.
Okay.
So if we, I would like that idea. Like what you were saying, that 20, if they're going to give up 20 and 20, I would like to have a berm. If we had a berm that could, then I can plant the arborvitus or they can plant arborvitus, something to divide, like the reason I bought the house I'm in is because that could be, I like the wild, which Webster did at one point, have some wild. Salt Road now is nothing more than Henry Island to me. And it's, and it's where I live. Honestly, I would sell it in a minute if it didn't have, I have meant like attachment to it. I lost a son in 2016, so he's still part of this house. He helped like remodel this house we made. And so for me to sell that is exceedingly difficult to, otherwise, believe me, I would have a for sale sign up as soon as I heard that 2018, you guys slid something underneath the car. Period. So that's what I'm looking for, not like, not trying to be, I'm a builder, so I understand you can go through where people can really be at foreigner's side, not trying to be that, trying to be reasonable, have something that we can both rehab.
Fair enough. Members of the board, Tony, we did, at least I should say I did, I had conversations with Mr. Weister, who is the other berm. And we had some dialogue regarding some ways to mitigate it. I'll reach out to him tomorrow. And we weren't far apart as to, we can say we're apart, he went on vacation and we just need to be connected, frankly. So I'll reach out to him tomorrow and open up communication on that.
Okay. Excuse me, Walt, do you have your grading plan? I'm just, just along your progress line, but if I'm looking at your grading plan, correct me, because currently I have someone with a berm proposal.
Sorry?
It looks like you may have a berm proposal.
We did. We did.
It's almost about five feet.
Right. So it's, yeah, we were, we took it under consideration about... So it's, yeah, we were, we took it under consideration about the berm, or some kind of buffer zone. Obviously, we didn't show any trees on it, but.
Can you get, I'm sorry, Walt, did you? Yeah. Was being whispered in my ear, what did you say you were thinking about doing the berm?
Well, we only got, we had it, and I had my guy.
You did, then you have one on the plant.
Okay, and see, I guess I didn't know that, I think, alright, you're about that, and I, thank you. The other, one last thing, and I'm gonna, my wife pulled me out.
Be closer to her, Mike.
As far as the streetlights, is that something you require to have?
No.
The streetlights, I don't know that any neighbor, any neighbor here wants to have streetlights. That's like, we live in the village, we didn't move into the village on purpose.
Exactly.
That might have been, I, I can tell.
Let's put him on his spot for a change.
Y'all be quiet over here.
That's, that's one thing, and then my wife said to mention that I have, I have a big playground for my grandkids, as well as other people that lost my mother, their great-grandmother. And this is like, I mean, it's literally so close to that, that's why I'm looking for the park, that's why I'm looking for a property.
And we heard that previously, so we did that.
Yeah, did you see that playground? That's a twenty-six thousand dollar playground. And my mom left us money, all of us, that we didn't know she had, and then I sent that in her respect, she's got plaques all over.
Did you ever collect a gym?
Yeah, we, no, that is a big yellow gym. Anyways, yes, and that, and, you know, I mean, so maybe we have to put a fence, I'm, I'm afraid of people like to walk in, just, you know, twenty feet across the line, and then they're, they're like.
Yeah, it's not a swing site, I mean, it is-
Hold on, wait a minute, wait a minute, give us your name and address first.
It's the same address, and his wife, Brenda.
Yeah, be up to the white, hold on.
It's, it's not a swing site, I mean, I don't want somebody to think, oh, it's just a swing site, like in everybody else's backyard. It's a playground, I mean, it's forty feet long and eighteen feet deep, and it's literally like right here. And I am just concerned that the kids right here in this backyard, there's no, like, buffer. What's to stop them from, they're gonna be, oh, hey, they're gonna wander right through, and think it's an actual playground. Um, I mean, our lot is rather large, so it's a huge, it looks like it would be a park. Um, and that's gonna be a concern of us as homeowners, that if we're not even home, kids wander over, and they're on this huge playground, and they get hurt. I mean, that's, that's just, it's, it's so close to that line, and there's, it's not something we can just pick up and move. I mean, it was professionally installed, brought in, uh, flatbed truck.
Well, they are putting a berm along, that's what we just talked about.
Yeah.
If, if they're, and who's going to maintain that? Is, is this an HOA?
No, I believe this would be other property, property owner, unfortunately.
What's to stop them from getting rid of the berm? Because it's a disaster.
Well, I think you won't worry about privacy as well, don't you?
Please?
Okay, we gotta get this thing going.
Yeah, pretty, pretty, just then we're done, but isn't there a way that the town could, you know, have an easement, or like a restricted deed, that does happen in there?
Okay, Mr. Weiser?
Yeah, I mean, the only way you can accomplish that is, is by doing a potential conservation even through there. Uh, which is something I could talk to, to Mr. Weiser about.
Alright.
Which, which limit what they can do with that angle. Excellent.
Alright. Dean?
Yeah, hello, Dean, my name's Dean Baye, I live on one fifty-two South Road. And I'm just, I'm hoping we can come, it's softening, we're helping everybody in the neighborhood, like, keep everything good. I know you guys have worked hard, you have to edit first. Um, I live through the north, I own all the land in the north, and I'm, I have no, no future plans right now to do anything. I, I'm a wild, I love hunting, fishing, and all that, but I'm wondering if you could put in the plans, uh, a, a future, a future way to my property.
I actually, I can speak to that, um, because I actually emailed Mr. Weiser, or I think you're using as well, about having a potential meeting with, with us to talk. Because I think some of the things that you initially have requested, um, aren't feasible, given the contours of the land, and I'll set it up, but we wanted to discuss further with you possible ways to do it. So if you want to reach out to Peter tomorrow, um, again, when I reach out to him, to talk to him about Lucas's questions and concerns.
And, and lighting, I, I also agree with that one.
No, no streetlights.
Almost at nine thirty, so.
You're okay, don't worry about it.
My name is Ben Happen Center, I live, uh-
Can we scroll up just a little bit?
So I'm on the eastern edge, uh, I counted from my seat, I don't know if I had everything here, but about twelve houses that'll back up to our property line. Um, the way that the lay of the land is right now, there is a, a good chunk, maybe thirty yards, twenty, thirty yards of pine trees that are forty to sixty feet tall, that run and divide our property from the properties that are here. And so one of the questions I have is, are those trees gonna stand, or they stay in the plan? Are they gonna get taken down? Our backyard, uh, there's not a lot of buffer without those trees there between our property and the proposed properties. And I just wanna second, third, everybody about the, uh, the streetlights, I'd rather not have streetlights in the backyard too. So, yeah.
Can you give a reading?
I don't know that I stated my address, it's two two five Baskett, so I'm coming in from the other side.
I think he's on the first page, let me read.
So then I first show up, first.
Yeah, gotta read them. They're great when they work.
Number one, too.
Walt?
Yeah, you got it, why don't you just take this, so you guys can look at it, here.
Basically, oh, you got it? Yeah. Basically, uh, all, we understood that the pine trees were there with our initial review of the site, and we actually made those lots deeper, because the overall depth of the property from east to west was such that we're not impacting any of it. We literally, if you look at the tree line, see this little squiggly line here?
Yeah.
That's the tree line that comes into these lots, and we made these lots three hundred and fifty feet deep. So the usable space they got is here, all our contours, our proposed contours, stop outside the tree line, so we're not going into the tree line.
Sure, sure. I guess due to, um, the Lucas's concerns and concerns from, from the cross-town builders that we talked to before, um, that signage, that the sign could, or that the town could have put in, this property is different, right? Because it's not zoned as an easement to the town, or as a, uh, conservation easement, it doesn't butt up the town property. Um, the difference here is that somebody comes in, and they say, okay, yes, sure, you gave us a larger lot, we're gonna use that larger lot, those trees are now gone, have, you know, missing teeth in, in the trees and pieces, going back to our property line. So I don't know that that can change, but that's my concern in this area. Because if they're independent lots, there's no HOA that says that, you know, we're gonna keep, we're gonna maintain all the borders in this, in this specific way, then everybody gets to make their own decision about those trees staying or not staying.
They're pretty good-sized trees back there too, aren't they?
They're, they're, they're very good.
Most people, when they have a wooded lot like that, they want to preserve it.
Yeah. That's why we made lots empty, so if somebody wants a pool in their backyard, or whatever, swingsets or what have you, maybe those just lots, we compensated for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I talked to these thirty about a conservation easement, but then you hear the fact that it's in their deed. Generally, the neighbors police each other, I mean, the neighbors all know that?
Yeah, I have neighbors, I have friends on Bannerwood, uh, off of County Line Road, and, uh, there's neighbors that are at war over that, over that competition. Some people going in and clearing all the woods out behind them that they're not supposed to.
Right.
Another neighbor saying, hey, look, I understand that you can clear everything out on your own, behind your own place, but I'm gonna respect the rules, and I'm not, I don't clear anything behind mine. So that's touch and go, I'm not very, I'm not very confident that's a-
I, I think the, the best way really is already, like, making the lots deeper, and then leaving it there. You're allowing people the ability to, to put things in that they want. They're gonna, they're gonna put it closer to the house if you want a pool, you want a playground.
Sure.
You're not gonna go on the other side of the trees, and most people, oh, I'm sorry, most people want that buffer, just like you do. Um, so I think really, the proper planning is really gonna provide for like what you're looking for.
Okay, yeah, thanks for clarifying that with the depth, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay. What's up? Alright, um, you got a couple notes standing on there, and that's about it, I guess.
Yeah, so the, the next thought process for Mark's example would be to come back for-
Another stretch plan.
Run my money. For preliminary finals.
No, you know what, I was talking to Josh about this. Either way, if you came in and got a preliminary tonight, we, now you're adding a few things out into this, we more than likely would have said, you know what, we'll give you a preliminary, come back for a final, still two meetings.
Sure.
Tonight, you've got this, everything is in order, preliminary and final in one night. Done deal.
We, we heard.
You know, it's not extending it at all, it's just covering all the bases with this way, I see it.
Oh, we, we couldn't hear you tomorrow, I think, nice and even productive, hopefully, everyone in the audience.
There was some good comments.
Yeah, I, we heard, hundred percent.
That helps a whole lot, that's why we, stretch plan, we even open, you know, give people the opportunity to speak. They know the neighborhood better than we do. Okay, well said, I guess.
Thank you very much.
No, okay. Go ahead. In terms of making sure everything is done according to those, I gotta reiterate my request for the full BAF form.
Oh, okay.
Uh, BAF form I have here is a short form, and it's specifically for rezoning anywhere, so I would like to see the full environmental impact statement form.
Yes, I think there was, uh, some confusion on that end, because the, the town board had designated itself the agency, and required, uh, we submitted a short form, and then I just spoke to Raj, I looked at that, in terms of the law. So I, I understand your request. Thank you.
So we will be receiving?
Yep, I was talking to my client about that, so.
Yep.
We'll, we'll send it.
Yeah, we're, we're sending, I gotta talk, Raj just sent me over the information today, so.
I'll take, I'll take it.
Okay.